Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for November 7th, 2017. Item number one, if we could call the roll please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Thank you very much. Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel for their discussion on the agenda as stated. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead to consent business. Are there any additions, changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselor Lehman?
Remove 4A4 and 4B1.
Alright, others? Counselor Lehman?
And with that, I'll move the amended consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. Before we vote, we will read it, read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for November 7th of 2017. 4A1 approves Michael Beard as a replacement for Mr. Joel Hellcamp on the Flying Cloud Joint Airport Zoning Board. 4A2 approves the minutes of the October 17th, 2017 meeting. 4A3 approves the sale of 3.2 percent malt liquor license for El Horace Mexicano LLC at 8:15 First Avenue West. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number 7943, which approves the preliminary and final plat of West Gateway, excuse me, West Shakopee Gateway, first edition. 4D1 approves a parking zone restriction change on the west side of Fuller Street from 3rd Avenue North to the alley. 4D2 approves the 2017-2018 sidewalk and snow removal routes. And 4D3 adopts Resolution Number 7935, which establishes a flat sanitary sewer fee in the amount of $325 per month for 8,600 Horizon Drive.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, motions been made, a second's been made, have been read into the public record. There is no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, consent agenda as modified passes. Thank you very much. Item number five, now I would like to call on any resident that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for having me. I'm Robert Weichl, 630 Fourth Avenue East, here in Shakopee, and I just wanted to bring up that there is some issues with the LEDs on First Avenue and Marshall Road. I spoke with the light guy from Scott County, and he says it is the city's responsibility. There have been issues for probably three months at least with these lights, and I just want to make aware of the city so that it can be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
It's the stoplights, correct?
LED overheads.
Overhead lights.
Overhead lighting, street lighting. Not stoplights.
Alright, not streetlights. Thank you, so noted. Any other resident would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, thank you very much. Item number six, business removed from consent. We will start with 4A4, and that was Metro Cities Draft Legislative Priorities. Councilmember Lehman took this off.
Well, Mayor, I took it off consent agenda because I wanted to vote against it because there's too much in here I disagree with.
Alright. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Metro Cities 2018 Draft Legislation Policies.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. There is a lot in here, and maybe I don't agree with absolutely every draft policy in here. However, I feel I've seen a significant, or I shouldn't say significant, I've seen a bending of Metro Cities over the last many years for the betterment of the, of communities rather than designed just for the Met Council, so I see slight incremental progress. Are we there yet? No, but progress was made. Councilmember Luce?
Yeah, I'd like to know what Councilmember Lehman's items are.
Well, there's quite a few, and we'll be here all night, but I'll hit on a couple of them. The imminent domain, obviously I don't support making an imminent domain of taking private property easier. I think it should be rather hard for governments to take people's property by force. This legislative proposal is to make it easier, so I'm opposed to that. The TIF section in here makes it easier for governments to use TIF as a finance, financing tool. I don't agree with governments being bankers, real estate agents, and developers. I think the private sector's supposed to do that. I don't agree with the, the street district recommendations because right now you have folks like myself and probably Mr. Whiting unless he paid his, but when you have a road done in front of your house, you're paying in an assessment over a period of up to 10 years to pay for that improvement that you can actually use. You can see the improvement, you can use the, you benefit from that improvement. Under a street district type policy, they're taking a section of a town, and they're charging everybody in that section for a future improvement that they may not see or actually benefit from because you're paying into it until that project is actually done, and you may pay into it for a period of 10 years and move, and then the road gets built and you've paid for a future improvement that you never got the benefit from. And it could actually put you in a position to where you're paying for an assessment on an improved road in front of your house, like I am, and pay into a district for a future improvement on the same road, so you could be paying twice. Lastly, with that same road district, you know, I understand that the theory is, is that you have a pot of gold to fix that road in the future, and right now it comes out of the general tax levy in the form of our CIP. At least 70% of it does, and 30% is assessments. One would have to think that if, if a road district system was set up, that the general levy would be reduced by that amount of revenue. Realistically, how many of us have ever seen taxes go down? So it would be a new tax in my eyes, which is what, what most of, many of what's in here is either complaining that we're not getting enough money from somebody else or ourselves, our taxpayers, one way or another, whether it's from the federal taxes you pay, the state taxes you pay, or county taxes you pay. So it's, it's way too far to the left of where I'm at.
Counselor Whiting?
You know, I agree with Councilmember Lehman, and I agree with the mayor. There are some items in here that I don't fully agree with. These are legislative policy positions. We do this for a few different boards we're, we're members of. These are recommendations from this body, it's Metro Cities. They, that's their position they've taken, and, and people have argued both ways. Now, every city doesn't do it the same way Shakopee does. They fund their roads, they fund their, their projects in other ways. So this is opportunities for other cities to get some projects done in, in a different way than Shakopee does it. So although I don't fully agree with it, I think these are the positions that have been hammered out through the Metro Cities Board. And, Mr. Reynolds, I think there is a process to argue some of these points if we agree on changing some of them, but you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, there are two things in that regard, Counselor. One is that as last year, if there are any particular points that any of you have issues with, I'll be more than happy to put that into a, a, a single document, send that into the Metro Cities Board. The other piece is, is that if there is something that not only that we disagree with in here, but also four other cities disagree with, and it's voted on at that point when it comes to the board for final approval coming up November 29th, on Wednesday, at that point, it can be recognized by the chair, and a discussion of the issue can be had at the meeting itself. If this particular body had something that they all, as a body disagreed with, I would certainly, as the member representing Shakopee, take that forward and work to try to find four other communities that had similar issues to try to get recognition by the board chair, and at that point, we could have a discussion of the issue on the floor, so.
Counselormember Lehman?
The other point I would make, not only with this Metro Cities, but with the League of Minnesota Cities, the other major lobbying body on behalf of all the taxpayers that the taxpayers don't know about, is not only are these legislative policy positions, along with the League of Minnesota Cities, these entities put together this stuff they're pushing through this, at the state legislator's office, without any citizen of Shakopee even knowing what's in it. And to me, I think that's wrong. I've been saying this for at least 10 years, that this stuff needs to be out in the public realm so the people that we serve can read it, give us input on what they're thinking about it, because ultimately it affects them. You know, one of the, one of the issues in here is they want to take and let the city decide law-abiding citizens' gun rights, which has already been decided at the state level, so, so the city's taking a position that the city wants to be able to determine that. What we could end up having is what I've said many, many times about seatbelts. You could have this city saying yes, that city saying no, this city saying yes. You don't know when to have your seatbelt on, when to have your gun and your trunk around your side. You know, this is, this is not the best way for, for policies to be made statewide, and that's why we elect state leaders.
Well, the Metro Cities is more Metro Cities, actually, versus the League of Minnesota Cities. It's trying to establish policy statewide. But you, you've brought this up, about the Metro Cities over the last couple of years, Counselor Lehman?
League of Minnesota Cities.
The League, but the Metro Cities. Would you like to serve on the committee or get involved here to offer input on the behalf of Shakopee?
Is it during the day when I'm working to pay my taxes and all the assessments?
Yep.
Wonderful.
Alright. Great way to get involved and try to bend the tree bench here a little bit, so.
Last comment, Mr. Mayor.
And if I, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I just wanted to point out that we do have a member on the board.
Right.
It's our city administrator, and he is a citizen here, and if you, if people do read this, that's on the, it's on the, on the website for tonight's agenda, and do have questions, you know, call Mr. Lehman, call Mr. Reynolds. I think they should, he should know about it, and he can move that forward.
Mr. Reynolds?
And, and my only comment, members of the council, is, is that I specifically sought out this position based upon some of the concerns that were expressed in the last couple of years, and, you know, my goal is to try to move these particular policies in a direction that, that I think that this body and this community would appreciate, and been working towards that.
Alright, no further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 4B1, which is the, excuse me, the site plan for Memorial Park Historic Area. Counselormember Lehman?
Mayor, I had a couple of questions on this, and I think it's a really neat and nice project, so I'm not opposed to it, but my questions were, one is I know Counselor Whiting is involved in this, and I, and I suspect that he's probably going to have to abstain from this, maybe?
Why would I abstain? I'm not making any...
You're not, you're not on that board that's...
I am on the board, sure.
Okay, so...
I would ask Mr. Thompson, I'm not...
Kind of a little bit of a conflict there.
Aimed by this, so.
Regardless, I mean, I, I just thought maybe it'd be a good opportunity for that, but my question really is a couple. One is the, the actual material that it's going to be made out of, are these materials that are going to last longevity, not like, like not wood or like that fake plastic wood or something, so that there's not a high maintenance in the future?
Right, and I did notice one thing on here, talked about the city taking responsibility for maintaining that, and I don't remember that conversation. I believe that the Heritage Society still plans on, you know, having some funds to maintain these things. The signs themselves will be heavy-duty UV-protected acrylic kind of product, and the, the kiosk itself is not, has not been approved for the design yet, so I don't think it's at the funding stage yet either, so. Right now, the process is just to put the signs in, signs 10 and 9. I think 10 will be actually on the trail temporarily till, till they have funded the little pathway.
Counselor Luce?
As long as Counselor Lehman stated that the Heritage, or the Historical Society planned on taking care of these kiosks, and the city doesn't have to, I'd like to see that wording stricken from the document.
Well, let's see where that is.
Counselor Lehman?
The city's still going to like mow the area.
Yeah, and take the trash out.
Take the trash out and stuff like that, and, you know, a little bit of maintenance here and there, I don't have a problem with. We're in the neighborhood. My, you know, I, I'm thinking ahead. If we can, if we can design this stuff and build it out of things that, you know, last, last a while, and you don't have to maintain them, and it's less expense for both the city and for the Heritage Society, and it's a great opportunity because it's a good project to have, folks, if you want to step up and make a contribution to this. See who?
It'd be on the Heritage Society website, and I believe that's shakopeeh heritage.org, or you can look that up. Otherwise, you know, this is a great opportunity because it's a public and private partnership, much like the Fun for All Playground was, where this, and the site is actually one of the most historic sites in Minnesota in celebrating that fact, so it's nice to have that historic tourism aspect to it.
Mr. Thompson, weigh in on any conflict of interest on a nonprofit board?
Mr. Mayor, no, there's no conflict, there's no, I understand the question, but there's no conflict, there's no financial interest in...
Is he not representing the financial side of this, the nonprofit as a, as a board member?
Well, Mr. Mayor... I'm not a board member.
Oh, you're not a board member?
No.
Okay, never mind.
Oh.
I thought you were a board member.
Alright. Did you have a comment on this?
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to clarify, when this was discussed in front of the park board and sent to the activity report in 2015, so it's been two years since it's brought forward, so we're just renewing it in front of you, the idea of the maintaining of the signs by the city was not that we would keep them up to date or anything like that. It would be strictly that we would mow around them, that we would take off any graffiti. We do have graffiti remover, so that's the maintenance that was mentioned when we discussed it in 2015. The, as it, as it mentioned in here, if anyone gets damaged or needs to be replaced, that would be on the responsibility of this Historical Society with their funding, and the city could help, you know, reinstall those, so, just to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lehman, you took this off? Did you get your questions answered?
I did. You want me to make a motion?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion to allow the Shakopee Historical Society to proceed with designing, funding, and installing the proposed improvements to the historical area of Memorial Park as outlined in the memo.
I'll second that with one clarification.
Motion made, and second by Counselor Whiting. Discussion?
Well, there's clarification, it's a Shakopee Heritage Society.
What did I say, historical?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
Further discussion, discussion? Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I just would like to reiterate what I said before, that I'd like to see the document state that they will take care of the replacement of signs.
I thought it did.
I think it does say that, actually. Somewhere in here I read that if there's damage to the signs and stuff...
If the kiosses need to be replaced, they will be done so if funded allows and contracted by the Shakopee Historic Society for assistance.
Say historic there again, too?
Alright, Heritage Society. You know, there are two, two different organizations. I very much apologize. Counselor Lehman?
Actually, it says the Heritage Society will purchase the kiosk. However, maintenance and replacement of the kiosk, if damaged, would be the responsibility of the city. It says it right here.
Yeah, I see that now.
So, yeah, I would like to stricken that out also.
The motion maker?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to remove the, the portion where it says that the replacement of kiosks would be the city's responsibilities.
That's fine, and the motion maker's acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Okay, we have an amended motion and a second. Further discussion, 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 all?
I, I would just say that the general population that wants to make a donation, that they could set up a fund for future maintenance costs and hold that...
And they have an annual banquet and fundraisers throughout the year, so. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then, no public hearings tonight. Number eight, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting, and we will stand in recess for that meeting.
Do you do that by motion or not?
Stand in recess.
You made the motion, I'll second it.
Alright, well. Counselor Lehman?
Alright, we'll call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority for November 7th, 2017 to order. Secretary, please note the roll. Y'all should have an agenda in front of you, so a motion to approve the agenda would be in order if there's no changes to the agenda. Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Motion to approve the agenda and second by Mr. Mars. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Consent the agenda includes item 3A, 3B, bill list, and minutes. Mr. Whiting?
Motion to approve the consent business that includes the bill list and the minutes.
Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Any discussion on the bills or the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4A, award of a facade loan to Home Street Property LLC for 116, 118, 120, Home Street. Mr. Michael Kersey?
Mr. President, board members, this is a request by Home Street Property LLC to basically restore back per the downtown design guidelines, the facade. It's currently Paul's Bike Shop who's in there. Remember, you all approved a loan for the old antique store, kind of junk store further down the street. So this street, after this, pretty much will be done as far as renovation and restoration goes. So the policy currently is recommended at $30,000, but the board does have the ability. I provided you a copy of the policy, and larger amounts may be considered for critical or Keystone projects that have a larger impact on the community, so that decision's up to you. They have requested $74,000.
So the cost of the roof, I believe, was removed from the original?
Mr. President, correct. So the policy of the board has been not to fund roofs, so that was removed from the eligible costs.
Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. I guess I thought I felt our policy required two estimates, and then there isn't two estimates here. I see your staff's recommendation to go get one, but that would kind of, to me, be out of the fact if any action was taken tonight.
Mr. President, board members, I did find out they did get another application, another estimate. The applicant's hearing, you can address that. It was for substantially more than the estimate they included, so he can address that.
And then I have a follow-up question. At least in the last couple of years, this is one of the larger asks of this facade program. Tell me how, is there more significant historical aspect to this building than others, or?
Mr. President, members, one of the things we've asked the applicant to do, should you make an award, is to do some additional research on the building. It's stuck on the, on the upper portions. Most of you know some of the brick was not so good, and so the Stucco salesman did a good job on downtown over the years, but we would like to see at least a section of that removed to see what kind of condition the brick is behind it as part of this recommendation. You awarded, I think it was $52,000, to the building on First Avenue to remove that brick facade that was on the first floor. So that's the largest one you've done recently. I think the most you've ever done is $100,000.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Whiting?
What I'm excited to see is that it's moving towards the Downtown Design Guidelines, that, that book was put together probably 15 years ago. It was a long time, and now we're getting some of these historic buildings moving towards that direction. And part of the discussion when we talked about the policy on the facade loan program was that if it did move towards the historic renovation, that we would consider a bigger amount. This is a pretty big ask, but as you know, it, when you're doing historic restoration, it does cost a lot of money, so. I agree with the point of trying to bring back that brick. I think that's a good idea. I like that idea. You never know what you're going to find under there. You never know what you're gonna find under there, and as we know, a shockbe brick is a soft brick. And this is a very historic site. I'm not sure, does it have a date, when they thought it was built, eighteen ninety-five? So I think it would qualify for that more than thirty thousand, but I guess it's up to the board to decide what point.
And again, the applicant's here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Mokel?
I concur with Commissioner Whiting. I, I think, I like seeing that they really wanna go towards those design guidelines, which is part of what we, with the last ask that we had. And changing some of the, the brick to, or from, to, back to brick and seeing what's under there. And I, I, as well, I, I understand the thirty thousand, but I think that this is just one more project, and it's the last one on that street that we could maybe look at giving some more dollars towards. Keep, keeping with those design guidelines, so.
Any comments, Mr. Lewis, everybody else has had a turn?
I'm just curious on who he has for partners in his LLC, if any.
Thanks.
Counsel, my name is Jeff Flom, I'm one of the partners in the LLC, and my other partner in the LLC is Scott O'Brien. One of the things, to go a little further on, you know, part of what has driven the cost on this project, on this proposed project, is to try to get toward those guidelines. And then if you look at the size of the building compared to, like, the Lady Di building just down the block that you acted on earlier this summer, it's about twice the size. Both the, you know, all the way around the building, but the facade, the front, is twice the size of building that we're dealing with. So that also impacts, you know, the size and the cost of the project.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess, ask a question about how old your building is.
Eighteen ninety-five.
Eighteen ninety-five.
Thank you, I missed that.
Well, my original position, when we, years back, discussed this whole policy, was I didn't wanna use tax dollars to fix up for-profit businesses' buildings. And at the same time, write code enforcement tickets to our residential properties and finding them. In an effort of compromise, we put into the policy a cap of thirty thousand, which was actually higher than what it used to be. And, and I agreed with that, and I, I agreed to abide by that, and, and that I would, I would support projects up to that. And, you know, in an effort to be consistent, I'm not gonna support projects that are over that cap, because then I'm picking and choosing winners and losers, and it's not fair. So, I'm gonna stick to my original, no disrespect whatsoever, I, you know, I, I support the program to that extent. I understand what they're trying, what they're trying to accomplish by fixing up the older historic buildings, and I can appreciate that. But there's only a certain level of appreciation of spending taxpayers' money. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I think we need to revisit the guidelines, because we've given some facade grants to some buildings that are younger than I am. I mean, this was mainly meant for buildings a hundred years old, which I am not. You know, I, I, I can see the hundred-year-old buildings, because they're very hard to maintain, but buildings that are fifty, sixty years old, I mean, they're not that hard to maintain if you do your due diligence. So, this, this doesn't mean anything for your building, because it is well over a hundred years old. But I just think we need to revisit it, because we've given a few here lately that I don't believe should have been given out. You know, if we had those back in the kitty, we'd have that much more, and I could maybe see going further. But the other factor in this is, we have one property owner in town here that's gotten, I've lost track of how many facade grants. I mean, he got the largest one that we ever gave out, plus a number of other ones. And, I don't know, are you in the business to make one person rich?
Mr. Whiting?
I think, I don't, it's always property-specific when we talked about this. This is, as far as our, our current facade loan program. And the fact that, you know, even, even our city, our taxpayers have, have invested in our downtown and doing the improvement projects that we're working on now. I see the value in that for the whole community, and I see the downtown excited and flourishing, and I see, you know, businesses wanting to get in there, and I think that's a good thing. I think this is exactly what the design guidelines were put in place for. Mr. Kersey, we have budget for 2018, money going back into this fund, I believe?
Mr. President, board members, we currently have, you'll see in the November budget workshop, a hundred fifty thousand dollars budgeted.
So whatever remaining?
So there's currently ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars, give or take a few dollars, in the fund. So if you were to fund at the full seventy-five, we would still have a balance that we would transfer forward.
Right. So I, I see that fund, you know, still being there next year for projects coming up. You know, we can always change the policy too, but the current policy is what we're working with. So unless somebody else has another number in mind, I'll make a motion to approve the facade loan program for the properties one sixteen through one twenty, Home Street, for seventy-five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
And I'll second that, and I, I would also really like to, to remind everybody that it is our downtown that pays the most taxes per square foot than through the rest of the city.
Well, my comment would be that if I was a betting man, which I'm not much of a gambler, but I would, I would bet that the majority of the loans lately have been over the thirty threshold. So, there's a few that were over that opted not to ask for that amount and capped themselves in their request, which is pretty respectful to the rest of the tax base. But realistically, if we, if we look at this, if we give out, you know, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, it doesn't take long to get to a million dollars, we're talking some real money now. And we're, we're asking, in some cases, the portion of our society that's, that's least able to fund this. And in some cases, they might need a roof on their own house, and there's nothing available from this city for them. So they're, households are not for-profit entities, these businesses are. They're in business to make a profit, and I understand that, and that's, that's respectable. Some of them profits need to go back into a capital account for their building maintenance. So there's a lot of different ways to split this, Mr. Mars and then Mr. Lewis.
Counsel member Lewis was ahead of me.
Go ahead.
Well, in the past, we've had a few property owners that have agreed to go longer duration on the forgiveness. Being that this is two and a half times the normal size, I would at least like to see two and a half times the normal duration. I mean, we have one of them that's up to twenty years before he's gonna be done with it, so.
Well, there's a motion and a second, so if you, if you wanna make that, to amend the motion, it would have to be a friendly amendment.
I didn't make it, so I can't amend it, so.
You, you can offer a friendly amendment, it would just have to be accepted by the motion maker and the seconder.
Well, I'd like to offer that as an amendment, that we go two and a half times the duration that's stated in the policy of five years.
And then that would have to be okayed by the motion maker and the seconder, and then I would have a question of staff, if, if that would be inconsistent with the policy and past prac, past practice of previous applicants. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. You'll see on funding on page three, item number four, it specifically talks about the, the type of arrangement that Commissioner Lewis has discussed, and he actually hit it right on the head, I believe it's two and a half times. It would be fifteen years if it was the full amount, it would be. And again, this table is, is designed to be a guideline, but it certainly falls right within that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking at this graph, then, obviously, if the applicant, if this motion were to be successful and in a form at the current level, that, that would be, it's assumed, then, that it's for fifteen years, is that correct?
It's not assumed, but it's something that the council can cer, excuse me, the, the commission can certainly do, based upon, again, that's exactly what the policy has outlined.
So, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
I think, I think there's been an unprecedented amount of investment in downtown over the last many years. I think it's paying great dividends. The historic aspect of Shockbe is important, we're trying to actually bring it back, as we do, for our infrastructure, with Chief Shockbe coming back. We just discussed the, the Shockbe Historical Society.
Heritage.
Heritage, I did it again. Heritage Society.
I did too, they're gonna have to change their name.
You know, with, at their banquet, what I attended, which I attended, the rich history dating back well over a hundred years, and the rich history that they're gonna try to showcase. I think his, and historic buildings are part of that. This facade program, as I speak, over the last fifteen years, has kind of ebbed and flowed, maybe it's gone with the economy. And, and certainly, we're seeing a lot more applicants of, of lately, but I think it's certainly paid dividends for the tax base, I think for our residents and visitors. I do feel that this amount is a little rich for my blood, I'd like to see it at fifty thousand dollars. And again, it's just, I know that our policy allows for large amounts to be considered, as part of our policy, we have a cap, but then there's amounts larger than that that can be considered by the EDA. And I would ask, my, similar to Counsel Lewis, I would ask that the dollar amount be set at fifty thousand dollars, and then that would be in the range of a ten-year forgivable note.
Is that a friendly amendment to the motion?
I would like that to be.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from the property owner if that is a workable solution for his project, before I make that amendment.
Fair enough. The applicant, please step forward, thank you. What was the last name?
Thank you, Jeff Flom.
Flom, Mr. Flom?
Yes. The, you know, we also have a budget to balance here, you know, so, when we scope this project, frankly, we stretch ourselves to try to bring ourselves toward those guidelines, really at the encouragement of, of, you know. We knew that's what the city was looking for, and something we'd like to be able to do, but we also need to make our budget work too. And so frankly, what we have proposed in terms of, you know, our, what we're contributing, which is, in addition to a roof we need to replace, a very expensive roof we need to replace. We're proposing to pay half of the facade improvement, which takes it beyond, frankly, what we would do just by ourselves without the support from the city, because it's not affordable for us. And so, you know, to look at a significantly smaller number, in terms of what the city can provide in a, in a loan, you know, has us also needing to kind of re-scope our project and try to make our, our budget work too. It's just the way it works.
So we're talking about roughly twenty thousand dollars difference of a seventy-four thousand dollar. Ms. Mokel?
Could you answer whether the terms, if we went to a ten or a fifteen-year term, how that, how you feel about that? Because that's also something that we've been discussing.
Well, certainly, you know, ten years is more attractive than fifteen, I mean, fifteen is a long time, frankly, for not knowing what the future is gonna bring with, with that building. We have, you know, our interest is in holding that building long-term, but, you know, that's a significant jump from ten to fifteen years.
So I, what I'm hearing is that, from this board, is fifty grand is about what you're gonna get, at a ten-year rate. And I would accept that as a, as a friendly amendment.
Is that acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now back to the main motion. The main motion now would be a fifty thousand dollar loan for ten years, any discussion on that? Did I get that correct, Mr. Thompson? Okay. No discussion, any questions? Alright, so we have a motion before us now for fifty thousand dollars for the ten-year duration.
Correct.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, myself. Motion passes three to two, congratulations, Mr. Flom, good luck on your project. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'd offer to adjourn to December fifth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M.
Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Whiting? Motion by Mr. Mars, seconded by Mr. Whiting, to adjourn to December fifth. Boy, Christmas is coming right along, isn't it, folks? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, so we adjourn.
We'll reconvene this November seventh, two thousand seventeen, City of Shockbe City Council meeting. We are at ten A one, award of bids for the remediation demolition of the old city hall, and Michael will present, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. If you remember, we put this out to bid, we got a substantial number of bids. The lowest bid is Fratelloni, who you'll see is probably one of the larger demolition contractors in, not only the Twin Cities, but also they go into Wisconsin, so it's a pretty large company. We have pretty good confidence in them. So RJM, if you remember, will be managing that contract. So the proposal would be to do the remediation first, take the building down, leave three feet below the surface, the walls, because we found through the demolition contractors, if we actually took the basement walls out, the railway would probably slide into the basement. So it's holding up that whole area, so we would leave those walls in place, but fill in the basement.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I had a question on the staff recommendation of the sidewalks surrounding the building being replaced in spring, because of winter curing issues. I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking here is, I'm worried that, A, there're gonna be some damage to the sidewalks from the demolition, and then I'm kind of worried about any future project through the construction process, what happens to the sidewalks, and, you know. Does it make any sense to, like, patch these sidewalks, at least on the Second Street and the Home Street side? And either have that part of a future development on the site or afterward, so that they're nice?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel member Lehman, the city engineer came up with a good idea today that there's gonna be a lot of damage, not only to that parking lot, but the sidewalks are likely going to collapse, that once the thing is leveled out, that, as a, in spring or whatever, go back with an asphalt sidewalk, because it would be silly to go and put new concrete in and then go tear it up once we get a development. So, to put asphalt down in the spring.
Okay, Counsel Lewis?
Just, what is the, have we had much interest in the site?
Mayor, Counsel member Lewis, yes. We have, we have two sites that are out, gonna be out probably tomorrow, but we've had a lot of interest, people read articles, wanted to know what was going on, so there are some local developers, but also some national developers that have called us and have expressed interest in the property.
Counsel Lewis?
Are you planning on keeping a fence up around it then, over the winter, with the damaged sidewalks, I'd hate to see someone injured.
I, I'm getting a head shake from our project managers, so yes, the fence will stay up, because the other feeling is, we're not gonna be able to patch that parking lot, because the crane will probably sink through the asphalt there, because it's a large crane, and there's a lot of heavy materials that have to be removed, so we'll leave the fence up.
Other questions?
Who's the project manager?
RJM.
Tara from RJM.
Do you have a question for the project manager?
No, no, well, maybe a little bit on the sidewalk issue, it just seems to me that you should come in with, in new sidewalks after everything's done, so that your sidewalks, at the end of the day, are nice, you know.
Counsel Lewis?
But if we got interest in a development, why fix the sidewalk, they're gonna tear them up anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
Let them finish it in the spring or summer, whenever they do their.
Exactly, let's not fix the sidewalks before.
Leave the fence up for a year if you have to.
Counsel Whiting?
My concern is, that you said the fence around the parking lot also, because now we're losing more parking downtown, and that's always a concern.
Mayor, Counsel member, we just reopened the Lewis Street lot, so.
We did. And we heard about those two spots.
Two spaces less than when we started, and it's, it's not full, I think that those seventy-some-odd people figured. I think that those seventy-some odd people figured out where to park in the interim, they've come back. I think we have a significant amount of parking. And even the city hall lot has not been used as heavily as I would have expected. It's used late at night, but during the day, there's really not that many parkers in there.
Just a concern, if we can save any of those spots, keeping them open.
We'll do our best. My suggestion, Mayor and Council, would be the sidewalk was an alternate. That as part of the project, when we write the contract, we could just leave out replacing the sidewalk and cooperate with Public Works to do something temporary if it's necessary.
Okay. Counselor Lewis, or, yeah, Counselor Lewis.
What is the savings on leaving the sidewalk out of the project?
Project engineer? If you could come forward. Thank you.
Not a savings, it's a deferment.
In front, right.
If we, um, so the base contract would be to install the sidewalks in the winter when they were completed with the demolition and the filling in of the hole. The alternate was to wait and put the sidewalks in in the spring, which was a credit of sixty-five hundred dollars. So what I'm hearing is maybe not put back the sidewalks at all, or change it from concrete to asphalt, so we can ask for the cost savings for that route as well.
Counselor Lewis, that answer your question? I'm guessing at sixty-five hundred, and if Public Works patches the sidewalk, we save it all.
Correct, we'd have more, a greater savings than that.
Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, what I'm envisioning is once there's a new project done on site, that there's gonna be matching new sidewalks.
They're gonna want the sidewalks.
I just don't wanna see us put new sidewalks in first, then during the course of constructing a new project there, damaging the new sidewalks and doing them twice.
Right, the thought behind the reason of putting the sidewalks back was so that the pedestrian and the walkway around that site was still available to the community.
Right, I understand that. However, they can always use the alley.
And what we can do is much like, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we can do is much like the city engineer had stated, and we can put it in asphalt currently. And then once we have a project come in, have that, the sidewalks put in as part of the project.
Other questions of staff? If not, Counselor Lewis.
If the damage is less than what you're expecting, could the sidewalk be patched this winter with cold patch?
The sidewalks will not be able to remain in place during the demolition. They will not be salvageable, yes.
Okay. All right. Other questions of staff, if not, thank you. Council members, Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to award the bid to Fratelloni Companies for a hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars, plus a ten thousand dollar contingency. Keeping in mind the discussion we had on the project here.
Second, Counselor Mokel. Discuss, further discussion, Counselor Lehman.
Wouldn't the actual amount be sixty-five hundred less? If you're not doing the sidewalks?
Project engineer? Project coordinator? Yes?
The total contract for Fratelloni would be one ninety-one eight hundred. That is less than sixty-five hundred.
Right, with the conversation.
So we're, we're paying for the sidewalks, it's just a matter of when they're gonna get put in.
No, that would be a sidewalk coming out of the bid.
No, we have not received the value to remove the sidewalks completely from the contract, because that's not how it was bid. Right now, accepting that alternate is putting the sidewalks in in the spring, so I'll get an additional cost savings prior to writing our contract for just not putting in the sidewalks at all. So it'll be additional cost savings.
Counselor Lehman.
The way I understand this document in front of me, it's this page.
Yep.
It says that alt-two sidewalk installation in the spring, above it, it says it's accepted.
Yep.
So that alternative was accepted in the bid of one ninety-one eight hundred.
Now, the base bid, if you look to the left on that sheet, the base bid contract.
One ninety-eight, three.
Yep, minus sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
Is the one ninety-one eight hundred.
Okay, so it's already out. Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Motion on the table and a second discussion. I guess, uh, not to, I, I think, I think this is good news, this is a good bid. Under two hundred grand. When I read the abatement report that was done a month ago or so, I, I was actually more concerned that I thought the abatement would be very, very expensive. And not that it isn't, but to get it abated and get it turned down to basically pad-ready for one ninety-one eight, I think, to me, I thought the number was gonna be more. So I, I, I think this is good, good news dollar-wise. Counselor Member Lehman.
Is it my understanding that the, we're gonna spend roughly two hundred thousand dollars to make a parcel valued at two hundred thousand dollars? Is that my understanding of what the county's new valuation is?
Uh, that's essentially correct. Yes, sir.
Thinking big though.
Yeah, let's hope someday we can get a ten million dollar worth of investment on that piece of property, like with.
One of them spinners companies things, they seem to be taken off or whatever they're called.
There is a motion on the table and a second further discussion. Discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to ten B one, Community Center Project Update, and Ms. Polly will present, welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight just to give you an overview, no action is requested from this item. But we are nearing the end of the Community Center renovation and ice arena construction process. So I'm here tonight to tell you kind of where we're at before we close this project out and finish some of the last items that we need to finish. So just to go through it really quickly, a lot of this presentation that I handed out is a lot of pictures. I thought it would be nice for you to have before and after in a lot of the areas. So we're gonna review the scope of the project briefly, show a transformation of the buildings, that's what the main part of this slideshow is. And then talk about the current budget status and some projects left to be completed. The scope of the project, when I say project was triggered, again, we, as you know, and many of you know, this Community Center has been looked at for twenty-plus years. Part of the reason why, or one of my major tasks when I was hired ten years ago was to answer the question of the Community Center finally. I hope that's answered at this point with this project. But this was re-triggered again in two thousand and fourteen, when we were looking at what we were gonna do with the ice arena. The cooling system of the ice arena was R twenty-two. As of two thousand and twenty, that product was no longer gonna be supported. So there's many rinks in the state that need to convert to something other than R twenty-two. We were one of those rinks. We also had some leaks in there. So that kind of triggered the process of, again, what do we do with the ice arena and what do we do with the Community Center as a whole? So feasibility study was approved and began in November of two thousand and fourteen, lasted until April of two thousand and fifteen, when we got the results back. Authorization to develop and complete plans was done in May of two thousand and fifteen and was completed through October. And we awarded the contract in December of two thousand and fifteen. The project cost, as you know, was thirty point four million. It all was a pretty fast timeline, so we broke ground on April first, two thousand and sixteen. We completed the ice arena in two hundred and forty-seven days, opened on April, or December fifteenth of two thousand and sixteen. So we're coming up on a year that we've been in full operation for the ice arena. The Community Center was completed this last July, it took about forty, four hundred and sixty days to complete the entire project, which was five total phases. So some information on the transformation, there's some pictures to show you. You forget what it looked like before, even though it hasn't been that long. But going through these pictures, it's really amazing what it's changed to look like and how nice it's become. So as you can see in this picture, our three beautiful peaks that we had are gone. Now we've got a great facade. When you walk into the Community Center, on the left, you'll see what the original desk used to look like. In the middle picture is actually what the desk looked like when I started. We made that change in two thousand and nine to the new desk, which was then changed again last year to our new lobby area. This is just a picture we had of the old hallway before we made those changes and now the new hallway. If you haven't seen it, which I think most of you have, the mural down the hallway, we've gotten a lot of compliments and ideas on that. People really like it. The fitness center was probably our biggest transformation. On the left again, you will see the fitness equipment that was in the hallway downstairs, which we now have as a lobby area. And then you can see where our weights and our cardio and everything were, which is on half of that volleyball gym in the past. So we went from twenty-five hundred square feet to a four thousand five hundred ninety-six square foot facility that you see on the right. The aerobic studios, we went the other half from the picture before, on the other side of the curtain was our aerobic studio. We went, that was twenty-five hundred square feet, just cut in half, the whole facility. We now have two fitness rooms totaling three thousand one hundred sixty-seven square feet. Plus where that fitness center was, or aerobic studio was, we now have this multi-purpose area that we have as our kids' gym. Do a lot of kids' programs in there, birthday parties at thirteen hundred square feet. On the left, you'll see again our old meeting rooms, our studio, which even when we started was a cable studio that was transformed into a meeting room. And then we had our rotary room. We now have two birthday party rooms that you see on the right, a multi-purpose room upstairs that can seat about a hundred and seventy people. Conference room that has table and chairs for about twelve, and then the large community room, which you'll see again. Our teen center was the one area that instead of increasing the square footage, we decreased the square footage. But the space that we have now is still amazing. It's used heavily and we couple it with the community room after three. So you can see, we had a five thousand square foot room before, we now have nine hundred and twenty-six square feet. But they opened up to the community room and that seems to have worked really well. We did, the wall that you see in there with all the bands on it, we did, we were able to make a large panoramic picture of that. We now have it in the current teen center, and we have it on the front of the, the desk there as well. So we were able to bring a little bit of the old teen center into the new one. New spaces that we have, we have our indoor playground, our drop-in childcare, our senior center, Shockby T Lounge, and then our community room. So these were added to the facility. On the very first slide, just really quickly go back, you'll see, um, we went from, the facility was really done along the square footage of what we had. We added about nineteen thousand five hundred square feet roughly, going from the seventy-six thousand to the ninety-five. And that was mainly that community room off the front with a bump out in the fitness center, as well as the bump out off the pool. Those are the areas that contribute to that nineteen thousand square foot addition. So really, a lot of it was done with what we had, amazing use of space. This is kind of the biggest area that people are intrigued with. I get a lot of communities calling to say, I can't believe you made an ice arena into a pool. So looking at these two pictures on the left, you can see when we took the sheet of ice out, the bottom one is about the same angle as the bottom right one of the pool, where you can see the fitness center overhang. That is over those bleachers that you see on the left-hand side. So it's pretty amazing, the transformation. And then the ice arena, it's a brand-new facility. It's eighty-nine thousand five hundred square feet. Two sheets of ice and a varsity locker room. We have a good partnership with the school district on that varsity locker room. And then this is the only transformation picture I wanted to put in there about the ice arena. On the left is a picture of our old ice plant for one sheet of ice, the four compressors that were very loud, non-efficient. To, we have three compressors in the new arena that manage both sheets of ice. And then the campus, if you haven't, we'll see if this works. If you haven't seen the video of the Community Center, I just wanted to show it briefly of how proud we are of it, what the community can see. It's on our city website as well. And if it doesn't work, you can go see it on our website also. So that is a little promotional video we had a local guy put together for us. He has a drone, he blew that through, but it helps get, people can see then what we all have to offer, as well as look at the pictures. And on this upper campus picture, you can see where we relocated the skeet park to complete kind of everything that was on our campus. So getting to our current budget status, the bond amount was thirty point four million. The remaining bond left in our city coffers at this time is five hundred and eighty thousand. Our contract balance and remaining payments of items that are out there left to be paid is five twenty-six. We will have an escrow returned to us once we have five trees replaced on site. But we will get an escrow back of a hundred and thirty thousand. So the remaining amount for the project, at the completion of the project, is a hundred and eighty-six thousand at this time. There are still a couple of items that we can do with these funds. It is a bond fund, so I am working with our finance director as far as what we can do with these dollars. But wanted to give you an update that we are within our budget of that total amount. Couple of the items that we could complete that would either be done with this, there were additional funding, or some, some of them are in our park asset fund, is where we have some of the improvements, would be existing facility items, such as painting the gymnasium, that was not part of the overall project. Painting the original locker rooms, updating the men's shower, I have a picture of it there that you can see. It's got no partitions, we've had a lot of requests to put individual shower partitions, just like the women's has, in the men's showers. And adding some graphic signage and some additional cameras. So those are some items that we could, if we wanted to move forward with still. Any questions?
Good, questions of staff, Counselor Lehman.
Can you put the last slide up for a second? The, the budget, current budget status, there you go. This gives the impression that the bond amount of thirty million dollars, the remaining amount is five hundred and eighty-two thousand. Really, we've got about forty-some million dollars left to pay on this debt. We paid, what, two payments at two point one million apiece? So really, we owe forty-some million dollars on this project. And what we're really talking about on this screen is, we basically got a loan for that amount. We spent that money on this project. And what is left over of that total loan dollar amount is one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
One hundred and eighty-six, yes.
One eighty-six.
I'm, I'm looking at the one thirty to be escrowed or be returned to the fund. So the total of the project, it would be one thirty escrow amount, added on to the other dollars for a total of one eighty-six. That's not that we've got a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to pay and our bonds are all paid for. That's not the case.
No, but what this is showing is that we did not go over budget.
Right.
So we never had to come back to council to ask for more money at any time. So we've managed our budget properly with the project over the last two years of doing it. Watched it very closely, watched our change orders, so this is what we have in front of you.
Counselor Whiting.
No, I think you deserve a lot of congratulations on that. I think this is an amazing project, you've done a lot of work. I don't know what you're doing now, I think we gotta find you another project, because this has consumed quite a bit of your time for the past several years, so. Because this has consumed quite a bit of your time for the past several years, so congratulations. It was a great job, it's amazing, it's receiving accolades throughout the recreation world, I guess. It was just in another magazine, I believe, I saw on a, on a update, so great job. I think you guys, I think there is a few updates that you need to do. I guess leave that up to the park board and you folks, but good job.
Other comments? I guess coming under budget, I think, is good news. I think really what's before us, moving forward, is to me the more important thing, how you manage it. How you fill it up, what activities we're having. Obviously, our membership is growing by leaps and bounds, which is exactly what we want to have happen. Filling up the programs where, for today, what residents want in their programming. It certainly has been showcased around the metro area. I think right now we have no other peer. I hope membership continues to grow. And as we move forward to manage the expenses, we're seeing monthly snapshots of the expenses and revenue, so I think that's good. Make it zing. Counselor Lehman?
The projects to complete, at some point, will we get a dollar amount attached to these things to see what we can do for the one eighty-six?
Yes, yep, yes. Some of them are, you know, the graphics and stuff will be very minimal, but yes, the painting will be a bigger contract. And the locker rooms will probably be a bigger contract as well, so yes, we will bring those forward.
Right, and just from my first glance, without really thinking about it, but it seems that the, the painting of both the gym, the locker rooms and updating the shower area, I mean, if you've got a full-up facility and when that section of the locker rooms isn't, it's kind of like stands out, I would say, you know?
Counselor Moreau?
I also wanted to give kudos to the project and how hard you've worked on this. I think with any challenge, there becomes opportunity. And I think there's going to continue to be things, like you already have a few things listed. So it'll be interesting what we decide on when those are brought forward and how we move forward with that. But again, congratulations, and it's beautiful, thank you.
Other?
I've got an idea for our next project.
Let's let her manage the one that she just got done.
Take a breath.
Okay, let's take a.
We still have challenges.
Print some cash.
I'll work on that one.
That's good.
I would say, membership is what is definitely letting us know that it's there, it's a perfect site for us, so.
Very good review, Ms. Polly, thank you very much. Obviously, and we're excited about the future, couldn't be brighter right now for our community center, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving ahead then, to ten C one, the two thousand eighteen employee health insurance. And Jennifer will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here seeking approval to authorize the city to enter into agreement for twenty eighteen employee benefits with Medica. I have no presentation.
Well, thank you very much for this packet. And I think Mr. Reynolds and staff has worked very, very hard at coming up with a plan to move forward here in a, in a more educated, informed way. And I want to applaud staff for taking the time to actually engage our employees. And I think that, from what I heard, you had four or five meetings, I thought that was really important. Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, who did the work and who did not? Mr. Reynolds did not. Both Ms. Gabbard and Mr. Burkett were the drivers behind this. And most of the number crunching was done by Nate and Darren as well. So a lot of hard work was done on this. We did meet with a large number of employees. We also had a survey involved in this effort. And I feel very comfortable with the result that we have before you today. That, again, all of those individuals I mentioned. And the employees themselves, who frankly really bought in and took a hard look. One of the things that Nate and Jennifer wanted really to do was to begin the process of really educating them on their healthcare options. And that is not necessarily an easy thing to do, especially in today's climate. So your staff did a tremendous job on this effort.
Counselor Whiting?
You know, I'd like to echo that. I, many of you guys at home don't know that the councils get some of these emails back and forth regarding what the staff is looking at and what the staff is seeing on these, in this particular issue of healthcare. And the amount of input and information that went back and forth between the staff and employees, or management staff, was amazing and you just don't see that in the private sector. And we don't like to see the numbers go up like they did, but you guys did an amazing job bringing the employees in on this. So a great job on that.
And we really did seek feedback from our employees throughout this process. Kudos really does go to Nate for coming up with some creative suggestions on the options and the presentations with employees and engaging our employees in this process. But the options that we have on the table are really the best for the city and the best for our employees that we can offer at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Moreau?
And I would also like to echo that, as I told Jennifer earlier, in this process with, with where I work, we've come in at a thirty-nine percent increase. And it's the challenges that are coming forward with solutions to that. And I think that by reaching out to those employees, even though that they caution us not to do that, is to educate them. Or not educate them, that's our job, but to choose one plan over another is not our job. And so that they were open to listening and coming up with ideas. And that says a lot about our workers too, so I want to say kudos to everyone.
Counselor Lehman?
Couple of points, Mayor. First would be kudos to staff for keeping us in the loop on this topic. Received many email, updated emails about where it's at in the process, what they're doing to work through the issues. Appreciate the process, like to see a lot more of that and many other things. For this year, we're looking at almost a twenty percent increase after all the work that's been done. You know, this is a lag, basically, to the private sector. What's been happening in the private sector over the last couple of years where we're, and we're seeing the same thing here that we're seeing in the private sector, where you're seeing premiums skyrocket, you're seeing deductible, deductibles go up substantially. You know, I'll be just brutally honest, there's not a whole lot more of this that our society, just in general, can manage. And I'd like to tell the folks at the higher level that are messing this stuff up to get their act together because they're hurting the nation in general. They talk about economics and making the economy better. The area to do it is right here in healthcare, not just for little governments, but the people at large. A lot of good creative solutions, unfortunately, I don't think the problem is going to be solved this year. I think we're going to see this ongoing until the federal level gets their act together and straightened out and sends some kind of a message of where we're going. But it's obvious that what's happening right now just isn't working, not for the private sector, not for the business sector, and not for the government sector. So kudos to you folks for working this out. I mean, it's, it's not the ideal solution. The ideal solution would be that fifteen percent we were planning on. But you know, we're a lot closer than where we started. And I appreciate the effort that went into it and keeping us updated on the progress and stuff. I did ask for a little bit more information from Mr. Reynolds. He sent that out to the council. And what I was basically asking for was, you know, how does this, what's being proposed fit into our budget? What we had budgeted, our forecast and stuff. And, you know, we've got an overview of the last couple of years, so I appreciate that too, that it's on the table for us tonight, so.
Further comment?
And if I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, to answer Counselor Lehman's question and for the public in general, the fifteen percent increase that we originally had budgeted was about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand citywide. And then we went from that fifteen percent to the nineteen point three percent that we are currently looking at, and that is a difference of fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. So that way, excuse me, Counselor Lehman, and other people know what we're talking about.
Yep, which is a grand total of, what, one point four million per year?
You can take?
Is that?
Just a little more.
Yeah, it's one point four, one seven.
One seven. So we spend a million and a half dollars on health insurance for city employees.
And we have ebbed and flows over the years. You know, we are at a high point in claims, we were at a low point three years ago. We do cyclical, go up and down. So, you know, the options that we have on the table really provide a lot of information for our employees to do what we need.
That's my deductible in the private sector, so.
Good. Counselor Whiting? Take a motion to authorize the appropriate officials to enter into a contract with Medica and set the employer contribution rates for the employees' twenty eighteen health insurance options.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, staff and employees. Moving ahead then to our workshop for eleven A, woodland management landscaping regulation discussion. Michael will present, there was some information on the table tonight.
And while Mr. Kurski is doing that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, to remind everyone, a workshop is a little more relaxed. It's designed to have a little more interplay between staff and council. Hopefully with the end objective of giving staff some guidance. No decisions will be made as part of the workshop, but then ultimately we'll take the guidance that you give us. And then a couple of months down the road, we'll come back with what we believe. We'll answer those, or do what you had asked us to do. And if we're not right, quite there yet, it is quite appropriate at that point to say, well, you're close, but we have some few issues that we want you to take a look at. And then we would go back and do some more work on it for you, so with that being said.
Thank you, Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, as the administrator said, this is a workshop. We just wanted to share with you some of the issues that we've been finding since the planning department started doing the landscape reviews. So here's what we've heard, that the current regulations are wordy and confusing, it's about fifteen pages. So we would propose as part of this process to clean up some of the definitions and refer users to the city's website for actual details and approved plant lists, because those do change. And one of the things we've heard is, much like the current land development code, which is lacking in tables, which we're working on, that more charts and fillable spreadsheets to do calculations would help. So to give you an idea, you'll see some numbers later on, but these were the two spreadsheets required to generate those numbers, which takes about a day to do. So what we're going to do through this process is try and figure out a more efficient way and put it online so before someone actually submits something, they can run their preliminary calculations. The other thing that we've heard is that it's hard to follow in the code. It talks about landscape units, it talks about trees, it talks about plant units, to try and provide some better definitions. So what we've seen in other cities is a table like this that shows what shade trees are and gives a little bit more definition. So for instance, this would include height, a six-foot clear trunk and a three-inch caliper in this particular city. So we would like to mirror something like this in the rewrite of the code. Tree replacement's been a pretty hot topic. And we've heard from the development community some of the issues they had. So one of the things we would recommend would be eliminate counting species that are diseased. So for instance, with the ash borer, those currently are counted as trees that have to be replaced for nuisance. Trees like buckthorn, willow, fruit trees, cottonwood, and box elder, and any other trees that the state decides are nuisance trees. Currently, commercial projects are allowed to clear sixty percent of the trees right off the bat, so you're only preserving forty percent of the existing trees. We would suggest setting some new replacement values. So common trees, six inches and over would be one-to-one. Exceptional trees, over six inches would be one and a half times. And then the high priority trees would be twice. So the credit is in inches, the credit for saving would actually be in trees. So one of the issues we had on projects is people are not saving the larger trees because there's really no financial incentive for them to do that. So what we proposed here is actually giving them a pretty sizable credit to try and preserve some of those trees. So here's an example, we would propose the minimum tree replacement would be two inches. The maximum would be six inches. If you removed a twenty-inch oak tree, you basically have two times the replacement. So you have forty inches you have to replace, you could do that with twenty. Two-inch trees are eight, five-inch trees. If you save a twenty-inch oak tree, you would actually have eight trees you wouldn't have to plant that would be acquired as part of your landscaping. So it's a pretty big bonus. To give you an idea, a two-inch tree probably is two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars installed. So that starts to become some pretty real money, which is really what we've heard from the development community. It's just easier to clear the sites. You would still have to pay penalties for unauthorized removals, or if you can't meet the requirements on your site. From the landscaping requirements, we're going to suggest from what we've seen that street trees would be acquired in urban sections at one per forty lineal feet. The other thing is we're going to work with engineering, public works on what is defined as a street tree. Right now, they end up on the private property pretty far from the road. In our lifetime, they probably won't provide any shade to that sidewalk. But talk about in specific areas, moving them back into the median. So you'd have median sidewalk and then the utility corridor, so those would actually go behind the sidewalk. We would change landscaping requirements. Right now, we have this quirk that the taller you go up, it's actually measured on gross square footage. So if you do a four-story building, it's the base footprint times four, which is a multiplier on the landscaping you need. So you have some sites, if you're doing a large building, basically you can't fit all the landscaping that's required on the site. So we would suggest, most cities actually do it on the total square footage of the footprint, because that's really the amount of area you're covering on the site. And then this would be a change requiring a buffer landscaping, which would be defined between residential and commercial apartments and industrials. So one of the things that happens right now, if you have an apartment next to a single family and it's four stories tall, you end up with all these plants and you're trying to squeeze them in everywhere you can on the property, we would suggest it'd be also good to provide a pretty substantial buffer between uses. So if you have a commercial use next to a single-family neighborhood, that we come up with buffering standards. And that's found pretty common in most cities. And then we would like to quantify parking lot trees by number of parking spaces and not square feet of pavement. So the industry standard is pretty much is one tree for every ten parking spaces. We have a very complicated formula that no one can seem to get right the first or second time.
I have a question on bullet point two. And then bullet point four, where you talk, change landscape requirements to total square footage of footprint. But let's say that a lot of the footprint is parking. And then is that in the calculation? So, but I can't plant a tree in the parking lot, I can if I have a, you know, a medium in there and things. But that was my question about the total square foot of the footprint, is a parking lot included in that calculation?
Mayor and Council, no, it's just the building footprint. And I have a slide coming up that'll kind of show you what our current example is and where we'd like to work towards. I think one of the issues we have is all the stuff gets concentrated kind of around the building and around the perimeter, and then we end up with a sea of asphalt. And for a lot of water, water quality issues and heat islands, it's probably not the best way. The thing we'd like to look at is, come back to, our parking standards are probably some of the highest in the Twin Cities. We really need to revisit that, because if you go around and look at most of the modern shopping centers right now, most of the spaces are pretty empty. So it would allow those centers to redevelop over time. And, excuse me, particularly on residential, we have one of the highest standards I've ever seen, I think it's two point two five. And if you're doing one bedrooms and efficiencies or even two bedrooms, that's considered pretty high. So you had one project where you're allowed proof of parking. We would like to see that more, because you're just putting more impervious. And I think you'll hear over the next four or five years, water quality's going to become a huge issue. And so we'd like to get ahead of that curve.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I can just go right on through this slideshow and give my two cents before I run away to the little boy's room. The first page, tree description, shade trees, ornamental and understory, street trees, multi-stem trees. A layperson like myself would like to know what each one of them might be, because I have no idea what some of these trees are, okay? Don't need it now.
No, but Mayor and Council, this was just one we pulled from another city. We will develop a list and it'll.
Give me some kind of an idea what some of these trees are. Deciduous, I don't know what that is.
Deciduous means the leaves fall off.
The leaves don't fall off?
They do fall off.
They do fall off, okay, well, I'll just write that right next to it. Here's some of the issues I have with our current tree policy. Here's some of the issues I have with our current tree policy. And I've, I put some thought into this, and I might be way off base, because every now and then I just do that. But nowhere does it talk about protecting our infrastructure. It seems to me that, and I, maybe it's because I've seen it over, over the years, where we've got trees close to curbs, close to sidewalks, pushing curbs up, pushing sidewalks up. You would think that we would want to protect our, our infrastructure. So somewhere in this policy, I'd like to see us take a look at not allowing trees to be so close to curbs, sidewalks, trails, these types of things, because I really think we need to protect our infrastructure and not do harm to it. So that's the first thing I'd be looking for, and how to incorporate that into a policy and where things would be placed. Then I would like to take a backward look at how we do development as far as trees are concerned. Instead of looking at the project on the front side and seeing half a forest, and saying, gee, you know, how can we protect this, when we're zoning and guiding it for a commercial or industrial use or something? Let's look at it from the end and say, what is it we want when it's done? You know, if there's fifty trees there right where this building is going to go, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to not expect them to be clear cut and put the building there. We've guided it for that? We've zoned it for that?
I mean, right now, we have that sixty percent right off the bat.
Right, but we're also saying in here that Page Three, still you have to pay for unauthorized removals, or if you can't meet the requirement on site. What I'm saying is, this bottle of water here is my bottle of water. I bought it. It's in my hand. Who is anybody to tell me what to do with my bottle of water? If I have a tree in my, middle of my backyard that I planted and I paid for, and it's grown up over twenty years, it's my tree. And who's government to tell me what to do with it? If I want to cut down my tree, I'll cut down my tree. It's private property. We really shouldn't even be telling these people what to do with their trees. I disagree with that philosophy on city property. If it's a city boulevard tree, or, or a, an area that's been designated as, as, you know, healthy, special trees that need to be protected, we might not. Which is what the original intent of this tree preservation ordinance was, when Kathy Gerlach and I worked on it back then. It was really designed for, you know, the bluff area where there's really a good stand of trees that we want to kind of protect. Some of the big oak trees out in the Southbridge area. And you know, I can't imagine that we're going to take a land use map and, and put heavy industrial, massive development in this nice, nice tree area. You know, we didn't. We actually looked at part of that area as high-end housing or something, where the impact is a little bit less, where you can actually get the benefit out of the, out of what's there. But it just seems to me that, that looking at it on the front side and penalizing somebody for what they happen to buy, and when they're trying to develop it to a use that we've designated to be, when we really should need to be looking at it from the end result. What is it that we, we expect with development for the end? You know, we've got grass standards, we've got soil depth, quality in grass and berms and, you know. Trees, like you're saying, you know, I think what I'm saying is the same, just a different way, that, that some of these projects, you can't put five hundred trees on the narrow strip of grass that's remaining after the great big building is put up. So it doesn't make no sense. The last comment I would have is the parking lot map that you have in here.
Excuse me, we got to that. What's?
Well, I'm going to just put my last comment in if I can, and then I'm just going to walk away for a minute or two. It's a, what did you call it? Kind of laid-back setting, right? I'm not, I'm not a big fan of this concept. Boss, may I show you how to work this stuff, will ya?
He has it on the slide, Troy.
Blow that up. It seems to me that we could make this a lot more useful for everybody involved and easier.
You can speak into the mic?
Sorry. It seems, you know, I was looking at this and I was thinking.
Your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm nobody. Some people call me somebody, but other people call me other things. The, when I look at these trees like this here and these breakages in the parking lot, you know, it's a parking lot that's designed for parking, and we're taking parking spaces away, and we're making a larger impervious area by putting the trees in the parking lot, and we're making a disaster for plowing and maintenance. It would almost seem like if we would put a big island here, remove these spots, maybe a couple of picnic tables and stuff, some little, little knickknacks where people can actually enjoy this area, and take them out of here and make it a lot easier from a maintenance standpoint, it seems like a win-win for everybody involved. That's just a thought I had.
So, so this again is just something we pulled from another city.
Yep, mhm.
I mean, this is our current drawing right here, which really doesn't tell you much. This is actually designed at eight to ten feet or even a larger piece, and we have some lots like this. You can cut way down on your ponding, because you can do that first flush in the landscaping islands.
Yeah, this looks like a nightmare to plow, and it looks like a whole lot of trees taking up spaces that are supposed to be for parking, and it's making the parking lot bigger to meet any kind of requirements. So I don't want to stay here. Weird standing next to him having this discussion.
Thank you. I'll proceed. Michael, thank you.
Okay. So to go back to this, one of the things that's confusing in the code right now, I think it would just be easier, because everyone does it anyway, just require foundation plannings, and we can define what they are in a table. And then change the required trees from one-point-two-five to two inches. I think we've seen that we've struggled on some of these smaller trees, particularly in windy areas, areas that get heavy snow plowing, that it's hard for them to survive. I mean, most cities.
A bigger tree.
Most cities actually go to three inches, but I think two inches, we can give a shot here and see how it works. Again, Councilmember Lehman mentioned this, so the, the gross floor area diagram with the parking kind of is the way we looked at, look at today. That's what the diagram is. We would like to work towards a better diagram that allows things like pretreatment of stormwater, stormwater in the parking lot, and taking some of the trees that get all crowded together and actually put them in the parking lot where they can provide some shade.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and just expand on that a little bit. We're all familiar with the, the parking lot that we've just redid downtown. And what most people don't understand is that, that is more, that is, you know, it's sixty percent of parking. But it's forty percent a stormwater feature.
Correct.
The, what, what we've done in that is incorporate a lot of what you see here, or the concepts that you see in this map, and what Mr. Kerski has talked about. We're treating that stormwater as it comes into that parking lot. And, and, and the concrete alleys were designed to move stormwater from point A to point B, so that it wouldn't soak in and infiltrate the buildings, which in that particular area, there was quite a bit of problems with that in the past. So it's, it's more than just a parking lot. We can, we can just spread asphalt and put lines on it all day. But I think as we look more and more, and especially from a statewide perspective, and we've heard this both from the Met Council, and we've heard it both from the governor, about the concern with water quality. That will have a major impact for Shakopee in a lot of respects, because we're downhill of everybody else, and all the water up, and the south runs through us. Setting that aside, what we can do is incorporate some of the things that we've done in that downtown project, and make these, these structures be more than just parking lots. They're actual water control and water filtration systems.
And I think, I think I agree that the water quality and what you do upstream is important, and I think you're going to see more of it. Started many years ago with rain gardens and et cetera, and getting more advanced to what we do here. So proceed.
And Mayor and Council, you'll see in a second why this is an important discussion. So Mr. Zabota is here. He can address specific questions on this project. But this was the concept plan that was shown originally for the sand company project in Southbridge. So they had preserved a lot of the existing trees. You know, they did a lot of heavy landscaping around the buildings. This is the project as we have it today. So basically, they're not preserving that many of the existing trees. They currently have about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar bond with us for trees. The blue areas you see are now large detention basins, because I think one of the things we need to do a better job of, and I think the city engineer's proposal to have a stormwater engineer on staff will help significantly, is early on in these projects, start looking at utility conflicts, stormwater issues, so that we don't have a pretty picture like, like this, that you just can't deliver on. So I think the stormwater is a big issue, and I think you can see in this plan, I think if you had broken up some of these parking lots, similar to what you saw in that earlier slide, we could probably work at making these a little bit smaller. But there's not going to be very many trees on this property.
So on this example of this project here, previously they were working so hard to save those trees, that actually was some of our foundation of our tree preservation ordinance years ago. And then, and then this is the implant, because they've clear-cut so a lot of that, those trees out on this project, and then this is what we're going to get here?
That's correct, Mayor.
So how does an approved plan like this go to this?
So again, you, unlike Hy-Vee and other projects, where you actually have a PUD that says, this is exactly what you're going to build, and if you need to make any changes, it's got to go back to the Planning Mission, Planning Commission, and then back to City Council. This is before my time, and Mr. Zabota can address this, but this was just a rezoning, and you don't get any say beyond that.
The, the difference that I'm seeing between the two, if you want to go back and forth, is in this one here, look, look at the difference in the stormwater ponding.
Well, I see that.
Because the trees, the trees are absorbing the water.
It's a huge difference in stormwaters.
Where they were going to, I thought they were going to get some allocation for the linear plant ponds along one-sixty-nine.
Mayor, members of the council, through the, through the review, it was found, we, we worked with sand companies very closely to try to save those trees.
Yep.
We looked at them, we had them redesign ponding areas to look at reducing the amount of tree removal, and then looking at what, with the tree replacement standards, what was the dollar replacement amount difference going to be? And what they ended up coming up with was for the tree replacement to reduce the size of the pond with significant changes. It saved them forty thousand dollars in tree replacement plans, but the engineering costs and the site construction costs and things that they had to do were more than forty thousand dollars. So it went back to the ponding being as it's proposed. As far as for the discharge into the MinDOT Pond, for that, I don't believe they ended up getting as much of the discharge as they had originally thought. And then we worked with our, with WSB, our stormwater consultant, and they tried to have, sand companies had asked to have some of the standards relaxed on storm, on stormwater to reduce the size of the pond. And engineering staff and the stormwater consultant said that that was not something that should be done.
And I've driven out there, and there's only a few stands of original trees left, but.
Yeah, the original plan, it was, it was a couple thousand caliper inches difference.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
Where's the trees that are currently there on that plan today, right now?
The, if you, Mayor and Councilmember Lehman, if you look on the, on my right-hand side, the smaller diagram, that's currently some of the trees they're trying to preserve.
There's very few trees left.
Pretty, pretty much.
Yep. No, I drove out there, I drove out there a couple weeks. Actually, I had to drive out there twice, because I didn't. I stopped. I had to sit there, because I remember our community's discussion ten years ago, and this area was actually part of it. So, but Counselor.
Right. And I'm thinking that those are the ones that are the larger trees too, correct? The more ornamental. They're not trying to keep anything.
Mayor Mars, Counselor Mokel, they tried to save as many high priority trees as they could, which is the larger oak trees. There was the, a large number of trees on this site were box elders, were box elder trees. And there was also a significant number of large oak trees, but they were far outnumbered by box elders. And so, yes, they, they tried to save, because obviously the, as they removed, the replacement went way up, and that's why we're, we've got a, we've got a letter of credit for three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars that was related to landscaping, that they couldn't fit on the site.
Let me know if my question is off-base, because maybe I'm seeing this wrong, but, so we've got a development in front of us that followed everybody's rules. The storm ponding people's rules, the parking people's rules, the, all the rules, and now they have nowhere to put the trees to meet some, another rule.
Well, they traded off. They, they were going to save some trees, and then decided not to save the trees, and do this.
Well, you can't, you can't save a tree where the building's gone.
No, but there was, if you go back to this, this first plan is what we looked at that was, this was, Michael's correct. This was not a PUD, so there was no conditions by the city. This was straight rezone, and on this first plan, there was a lot of discussion of, of saving a large buffer along Stagecoach Road. But with no protection from the city, as I think a PUD is designed for, or extra conditions. Then we, they, they changed that.
Somehow, it looks to me that, that there, there is no stormwater ponding here in this plan, right here. This one is substantially smaller. There is none here. And on this plan, there's two down, two small ones down here. On this plan, it's like substantial.
That's why I asked the question about whether they got.
Something went wrong on this plan with the water calculations that we ended up having to have. And if this is what the future water calculations are going to be on most projects, that's pretty substantial. Something's going to have to change somewhere.
Well, that's why I asked the question about possibly.
As far as for numbers, looking at monetary standpoint, the amount of, for, we get four hundred dollars per tree for if a developer can't or isn't able to plant a tree on their site, then they give us four hundred dollars to go into the tree fund to plant a tree somewhere else. Their original, their original fee based on what you saw with the, with a lot of the trees being saved, that would have been sixty thousand dollars. Right now, we're at, just shy of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. So that was the difference on this particular site with that, with that change.
Thanks, Counsel. Counselor Mokel?
But I think that if, and I think it's a great that we're taking on this tree ordinance, but I think, as Counselor Lehman pointed out, if we're not going to address the parking requirements at the same time, I think we're, we're going to be back in this situation.
Counsel, Mayor and Councilmember Mokel, if you look at their new plan, you can now see the upper level is basically a sea of parking. And I think it goes back to, while this may be easy to plow, it's not a very pleasant living experience. And so I think what we're trying to do is not over-pave these sites for spaces that will hardly be used, and it creates large ponds like you see here. I think that we have to come to a balance where these ponds can shrink down a little bit, and we can lessen the impervious.
Counselor Whiting?
No, and, and going back to the, the parking lot with the trees, I think that's, that's where we get the best bang by, you know, the water quality issues, filtration areas, to allow that. I, I would prefer, you know, to, when these projects come, that they save some of the best trees. And, and that should be the goal, I think, as many as they can. Obviously, you can't save the ones where they're building, but we need to try and save those big, prime trees as best we can.
And Mayor and Council, I think one of the, to Councilmember Lehman's point, if there are pretty significant trees on the site, and we make a commitment, I think, by providing some much larger incentives, it might be worth the effort to try and work around. I mean, right now, as Mr. Zabota kind of said, it's like forty thousand dollars on a, who knows how large a project, it doesn't make sense.
I think the discussion is that, obviously, if there's a big residential or commercial area that you can, you know, take use of your land. I think in many ways, our tree ordinance is a little more restrictive or punitive. I think we should save trees too, but I think we should have, like I think we're trying to get to now, be more incentivizing to, to either save the trees or to, to do the things and have the outcome what works. Because I'm looking at this, two drastic examples, and the pendulum has swung too far. Go, we need to be somewhere, somewhere. Go, we need to be somewhere somewhere in the middle.
And Mayor and Council, I mean, I I think this was a a beautiful plan, it would have been highly marketable project, I think this hurts everybody because now basically it's gonna be a tougher site and. I mean, it's a competitive market, I think we wanna give our developers kind of the the hand to to actually be the most successful as they can be. And so we ran, um. Mr. Saboda kinda ran a very preliminary estimate, so there were four thousand four hundred and forty-nine inches on the site of trees. Um required replacement, you can kinda go through the numbers if we were to make the modifications we've talked about here, so. Right now, they have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars in a letter of credit. With the new numbers, they'd be at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred, so it basically cuts it about fifty percent.
Counselor Whiting?
This wouldn't be retroactive for this project. If we changed this policy, they'd still be at the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Mayor and Council, I remember they plotted this as three different lots, so it depends on how the last lots come in, but they have cut most of the trees down already.
Yep.
Right.
But I think what we're trying to do is be fair and reasonable and write an ordinance so that when it comes back to you, if there are significant groupings of trees. Make an incentive enough so they move a building or work around them.
Or change the configuration of a parking lot or something.
The sand project is 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 in the works right now, so I mean, it'd be too late to go back and try and, you can't put the trees back. But, you know, they've already made the decision.
Right. And we're in the early stages here, so proceed, or I'm sorry.
Well, I think there's an opportunity in the future phases to to, if the incentives are there, to change the the configuration of a parking lot, to put a stand of trees in or save a stand if they're there. Like I said, I I early, I think I think we're looking at it from the wrong perspective, we go into a lot. And we look at it, what's currently on there and we're not thinking about what the end product is gonna be, we need to be looking at the end product, you know.
Well.
If somebody wanted to take a forest on a on a ten acre site and mow the whole thing down, build their building, put in their parking lots and their drainage systems and put. Strategically good located big trees and stuff, I'm okay with that, if that's part of their development.
No, and Mayor and Councilmember Lehman, that's what we provided is big incentives.
Right.
May only end up with ten trees, but there would be ten fantastic trees versus now we end up with a hundred little one inch trees.
Right.
Spread on the property.
That are gonna grow up and wreck a sidewalk somewhere.
But I think, you know, I I I get the reality that our. Tree ordinance has been worked over at least two, if not three times last fifteen years and. Uh with developer input and stuff, but uh the end game here, I like this, this is a concept plan. This is the end goal, boy, that sure looks nice, let's approve it. And then here's the end plane now. And I. I don't know, and maybe this is where we need to go, I think that's important to not have such a swing of the pendulum.
But Mayor, I think I think the the end result is not necessarily the developer's fault. The end result is because they're required to have all this parking for these size of buildings, they're they're required by some other entity or us or whoever that they've gotta have this much ponding. They're required by so many different layers of government to have all these things that there, there's no room for anything else.
Mr. Reynolds?
And Counselor Lehman uh is hits it on the head and what we as a staff are trying to do is to go through all of our. Uh developmental uh requirements and and take a look at it and. And recognizing that there's a historical reason for why things are as they are now. But also looking at best practices and looking at other communities. Uh we have a lot of people that have a lot of experience from other places other than just Shakopee here currently. And we're taking those ideas and 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 we really wanna make sure that what we're bringing to you and then ultimately have for development is something that works for everybody. But Counselor Lehman, you're exactly right, all these requirements and they work against each other.
Right.
And so, you know, we want everything to work together, uh be more effective and efficient at it and then, you know, and then the developer knows what they need. You know, one of the first things I heard when I first got here was is that, well, you know, we're we're going down the road and all of a sudden there's something new that pops up, you know, we just wanna know what our requirements are. And and frankly, with this current uh uh landscaping and and tree ordinance, I. You know, I I've read it multiple times and half the time I I can't figure out what it really means and that's not good. Uh we need people to be able to understand what it is we require, we are requiring.
Uh Mayor Mars, uh to answer some of Counselor Whiting's questions regarding whether this site is kind of a done deal and that's how it's gonna, and that's how it's gonna stay, the answer would be no. Um they still have two, they still have two lots to final plot, they still have building permits to apply for. Uh there's standards that would take into account the replacement, we've got a letter of credit. That may be redu- that may be reduced, that would, depending on if the regulations change, when their construction project timeline is. Uh so, no, it would not be a done deal for this particular project. So as far as the trees, obviously they're not gonna come back, but it would, it could change what their replacement requirements are. Um and then the design of their site and how they have to uh design for the future.
Well, Counselor.
If I may follow up on that, um. I hope we're not doing this for one project, I hope, as Mr. Reynolds has said, that we're we're doing it for for all the projects that come forward to make it easier for everybody, I I I agree with that. If we're moving this to help out one development, then I have a problem with it.
This is an example, this is an example.
But we have other sites we've talked about as staff that nothing has happened on because it may be too heavily wooded and. I think the other thing it will do is, so if you go out and you you're gonna buy a site, if we have clear rules and regulations. You'll be able to know within reason, parking, everything else, what you're gonna have to put on it and then you can make a fair and reasonable offer, I think we. Have an issue in the community where someone says you're paying four hundred thousand dollars an acre and that's the way it is, they do a contract and then you end up with that site and they kinda go. Geez, I didn't know I was gonna have to do stormwater or tree replacement and all just adds up, I think if we can make a level playing field for everyone. Everyone will know what their costs are going in and it will be fair to everyone.
Well, I agree with that.
Counselor Luce?
If we remember back to when this project came forward, they had some low spots in that project. And according to our regulations, they cannot go above a certain height from the lowest point. Now, that removes most of their trees because you can't bury the base of a tree without killing it. So that's why they're basically clear cutting the whole thing in order to, and whole property in order to make it work. Now, our project should be, we don't count trees beforehand, we only wanna see the final solution. What's there before, yeah, if they got some great trees, that'd be nice to them to save, but if they're gonna mow them down, I could care less. Long as the end product looks nice and fits everything, like Counselor Lehman said. You got all these other regulatory groups, you gotta dodge, and now we're gonna throw this in the mix besides. The builder wants it to look great, the the better it looks, the easier it is to rent. You know, they're not fighting us on this, they're fighting us on counting these trees beforehand, that's just. For lack of a better word, that's asinine. Why would you make somebody go out and count tree diameters beforehand? That just doesn't make sense, tree diameters at the end would make more sense, it's up to them if they wanna save them.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, from my perspective, I I mean. I think what we're seeing here and specifically the Counselor Whiting's concerns, no, I don't see this as for toward one developer, I think, I think really the issue is. What we have is we have our first. You know, I call it ultra-high density, R four development, larger scale. Actually getting put on the ground and we're starting to see the ramifications of of. All the different layers of. Government oversight being applied to a project, we're not really used to doing, it's kind of the first one on a box of this size. And uh. You know, I'm looking at, there's a lot of parking on this map, there really is, I don't know if it's too much, if it's not enough, that's for you guys to figure out and bring back, you know. Solid information on, I mean, numbers and all that stuff. Um the water thing is just substantial on this compared to what I saw over here. And even if there is a change and it is applied in future phases of this project, there's still. You know, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars here that are gonna put trees somewhere, whether it's either on this site or somewhere in this community to benefit this community. You know, and I'm sure we're gonna put them somewhere where A, it doesn't hurt any infrastructure, B, it can be appreciated. But somehow, we've really gotta figure out. You know, if if we might find at the end of the day that we shrink parking, we we deal with water and we still can't get a site to work with these kinds of densities. Maybe the density, may maybe that density requires a little bit bigger piece of property, I I don't know, whatever. But I think all of them things are in play.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize to staff if they thought I was yelling at them, it's just. Irritating the way this all works and it just, it's, there's gotta be a better solution, so I am sorry if you took it personally.
Well, I think so, I think staffs.
And Mayor and Council, I mean, I think if you, we've certainly looked at a lot of high density projects and there are. Ways to do them and meet our rules and regulations, they're slightly more expensive, but if you want higher density, that gets calculated in the number of units.
Mayor Mars, uh members of the council, one thing that should be noted, you'll note that this property was rezoned from B one highway business to R four. The amount of hard surface that's allowed in B one would have been fifteen percent higher, you would have been seeing bigger ponds, more parking and more tree removal.
Well, I think that.
But that doesn't reflect these two maps, this one here doesn't show. Much ponding, it's got the two small ones down here, it's got a little bitty one right here.
And again, Mayor and Council, I I think it's important when we work with these projects early on that people, both sides, be honest with what's really necessary. And I think that. Having a stormwater person on staff's gonna help a lot because they'll be at the table along with the city engineer to kinda go, look, there's some big issues here we need to deal with now and you can't make that pretty picture work.
Counselor Mokel?
And I think when we we went to the R four zone here, it was because it was next to the transportation and again, that starts to have that conversation about parking. And the slots, if we're gonna, if it's already gonna be next to transportation, does it necessarily even need that many more spots? So those might be some credits that those developments could have.
I mean, Mayor and Council, we've been looking at the higher density projects and I'm talking a hundred units an acre. They're being more creative by doing things like underground um storage, because when they get the density, you can afford to do those kind of things. And so there's a project under construction right now in Adana that has all of their. Parking is under the building, it's hidden from the road and they're able to meet, I think Adana has a one point, one point five um per unit. And all their stormwaters being stored on site, there's no ponds that you'll ever see, but it's still there, I think it's. Question, when you reach the right density, you can afford to do basically anything. Fearful Lynn's another good example that Mr. Saboda just mentioned, they've got multiple utility run lines running through their site. They're doing some pretty creative things on stormwater, putting it under the pavement, um and they're doing a lot of landscaping, but they're still gonna owe us twenty or thirty thousand dollars at the end of the day, but they built that into their budget when they were planning the hotel.
Counselor Luce?
I think there's something some people are missing here and that's the correlation between trees and storm ponds. Would there be some kind of a table you could come up with to show us what a uh mature tree absorbs in water and how much that would lessen a storm pond size?
Mayor and Council, what's something we'll look at, work with the city engineer and our consultants on. I think uh Mr. Reynolds mentioned the project we did downtown, there's a lot of underground storage in that project, I think that's important and I think the private sector is. Reluctantly doing it more and more because they get a higher density and a better use of the property.
I think uh. You know, as as our staff is going through our old ordinances and regulations of the last twenty-some years, that. You know, I I think we're redefining, I think better best practices of integrated, we're finding that actually some are barriers. And need to be updated and this is actually why this is coming forward, because now it seems. Punitive where instead of incentivizing. I know this is a uh severe case because of the amount of trees on there, but like at the Hy-Vee location, there was no trees. If in the future up by our our mall, if if that had some residential, there are no trees up there on the city lot. Um down in the D R Horton, I don't believe there's any trees, so this is a one example, so why we use and look at this. You have to look at a site that has wooded, but then you have to also look at a site that has no trees and what.
What's the end product?
What you want at the end, and I agree.
Mayor, I mentioned, I mean, Hy-Vee, Mr. Saboda worked on that, they have lots of trees in their parking lot, I mean, they saw the benefit of doing that.
Counselor Luce?
You just made my case. A person that buys a lot with a lot of trees is taking the short end of the stick when, like Hy-Vee, they had to add trees because they didn't have any.
Right.
You know, so they didn't have to sit there and count trees, they didn't have any. You know, for for us to make the guy with the wooded lot count trees.
We're penalizing them.
Yeah, doesn't make any sense.
Well, good, uh let's try to stick back on uh tree ordinance and I know we've gotten into parking and. Which I I think we'll address in the future as well on some of these things and, but let's uh let's proceed here, or Counselor Lehman?
I I think Kathy, Counselor Mokel made a good point, I think I think they're all interconnected. I think the parking and the stormwater and the trees, I think it's all interconnected because when your parking lot size is that big, where are you gonna put the trees?
Well, I think that times have changed, I I'm gonna say that again, we go to go to any of the uh. The uh Dale malls, four or five of them around the metro, around those cities, Southbridge or uh South uh Dale is a great example, those parking lots were massive. And where they thought the impact and I guess at times, in a long time ago, those were full, they're not as full anymore. You're seeing parking ramps being built, uh so it's more compact and closer to the store. Now, the next phase is to sell some of these part of the park, parking lots and and put up apartment buildings. Or put up a restaurant in the middle of the parking lot.
Or a hotel, which is.
Or a hotel.
Southdale's got a new hotel under construction and they already have two residential projects.
Right, so they're filling up these seas of parking lots that. Maybe twenty years ago made sense, but now are economic wastelands of unproductive, not the best and highest use and. Obviously, this, you know, landscaping is important because you're taking a a wasteland of of impervious surface and you're putting a hotel or a. An apartment and you're actually ending up getting some landscaping around that building. Uh while you're taking away some parking that was of value prior, but um now getting infill redevelopment, so. Seeing a lot of change in all the interconnectivity of all these things, so. Michael?
So we will um take your feedback back and hopefully get something to you and. Early next year sometime, we'll probably take it to the planning commission for their first comments and bring it back and make some more changes.
Well, good, um I would ask uh council members if they had more input to email staff, I like your, I like the last. Uh page here with what we have now to what could be possible, it seems less and. Less uh punitive and more uh more incentivizing from that, so that'd be good.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Uh Michael, thank you. Well, thank you. Um enough direction. Moving ahead then, uh twelve uh twelve A, the city uh bill asks, bill asks for everybody's approval. And then we would start with uh twelve B, liaison and administration reports, Counselor Member Lehman?
The uh school district appointed John McBroom temporary interim. Superintendent in the absence of Gary Anger. That was the only thing on the agenda that night, so. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I should say that for those that don't know, Mr. McBroom, he's a past superintendent, respectable, solid individual, in my opinion, of the years that I've worked with him. Uh he knows, he knows the ins and outs, he's experienced, um pretty fair individual, I think, I think, you know, he's kinda walking into a situation that's. Nobody really wants to walk into, but, you know, I mean, if if anybody has to grab the bull by the horns and any interim, temporary, I think he's a good man for the job, I really do, so.
He would be a true interim interim, he wouldn't.
True temporary interim.
He wouldn't be potentially the next superintendent, is what I'm.
No, I don't think he's interested in that, I haven't talked to him specifically about that, but I think the intention of the school board was a temporary interim.
Um, thank you. Uh on ten twenty-five, I met with some downtown business owners to discuss uh our infrastructure. Uh construction that's going on, that seems to be going on very well, a lot of interest in that. Um on ten thirty, I did attend the Shakopee School District with uh uh City Administrator Bill Reynolds for this special meeting. To get approval to go and negotiate and hire the uh. for this special meeting to get approval, go and, uh, negotiate and hire the, uh, interim interim superintendent. Uh, today, went to the Hy-Vee grand opening. Um, I spoke that it brought a lot of balance to our community. Years ago, I know Marshall Avenue took a lot of heat because it was kind of the, where the commercial district was, at least at that time. Um, now with the extension of Seventeenth Avenue, East and West and Veering, uh, you know, Canterbury Road is used a lot more. Uh, Marshall, and now, uh, many years later, we're seeing, uh, Marystown Road, uh, with the advent to the West End. Um, this Hy-Vee development, you're going to start to see some, I think, some better balance in traffic patterns. Um, but Hy-Vee is a great, uh, 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 great place for that, uh, store. Also later, I went to the, uh, Shakopee Police Department swearing in of new officer, A- Adam Kirchenbaum. And a couple of council members were there, so, uh, great to have him on board. That was my report.
Yeah, I attended the swearing in today of our new officer. It's, uh, great to welcome a new, uh, new face to the staff and, uh, to our streets, so, uh, welcome. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, the MVTA met and approved their CAD AV, ABL system, uh, which basically is a computer system that kind of runs the, runs the, uh, the program over there. So that was an expensive endeavor, but, uh, moved that forward, and that's about all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Member Mokel?
Well, these three weeks, uh, two, two and a half weeks kept me very busy. Um, so Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, I attended what was called, um, Marnita's Table, um, that the Scott County Health and Human Services put on. It was a dinner and it got, um, the community having discussions around healthcare and access in Scott County. Um, and then on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, the SDA had their housing and transportation meeting, um, November. So on Monday, um, I had our first, um, Luac and Metropolitan Water Council joint session. It was more of a planning session and kind of, um, talking a lot about, um, water access and, uh, communities and, and land planning and how that's going to affect us later on as we, um, grow into the next, you know, twenty forty, twenty fifty even. Um, and starting those conversations and how we can work together. And, um, for those of you who may or may not know, so Land Use Advisory is seven counties, whereas our, as the Metropolitan's, um, water supply is actually eleven counties. So there's some challenges as we go through this process. Um, and then I, last night was also the SPUC meeting, and, um, they accepted the retirement of Joe Hellcamp as he is moving out of, um, Shakopee. Um, we, they also had, um, the MMUA Minnesota Rodeo results. And, um, of course, we had quite a few of the employees' take-home trophies in that event. Um, and so I can send, uh, Mr. Reynolds a copy of that, so everybody can see who was, um, honored in that. Um, we got an update on their SEADA, um, system that they're putting in and how, um, when they go through a switch being turned off or in, um, when it's being worked on and how that flows to the rest of the system and, um, those types of things that can be, um, beneficial as they, as they go through. And if there's something goes down, it, it shifts all of the energy into where, um, and then they can control it and they get text messages and messages as soon as something maybe goes out and there's alarm, um, which will make it easier for us. And, um, and then they went through their preliminary budget for this year. And then today I also attended Hy-Vee's grand opening and the police swearing in.
Thank you. Uh, City Administrator Reynolds, your administration report.
Yeah, just a, a, a couple reminders, uh, for all of, uh, the council and then, uh, I guess a heads up for the general public. On the twenty-first, uh, we're going to essentially be holding, uh, uh, two different workshops. Uh, I'm going to try to keep everything else very light so we can focus on those workshops. One of those will be the Canterbury Master Plan that will be brought forward. Uh, the other one is our, our, our budget workshop, and, and, and I have to say that, uh, I'm, I'm excited about, I get excited about budgets. But this is a, this is a budget that, that I'm really excited about. And just to, uh, just to kind of recap a little bit, uh, for the last couple of years, we've done a lot of financial restructuring in our budget. Some of that has been internal, which is basically we're looking for stability. Some of it's been external, which we're looking for the ability of the public to actually understand and know what we're doing, uh, in transparency. Uh, what we're now doing is focusing, uh, on the budget product itself. You're going to see a drastically different looking budget this year, uh, in a lot of respects. Now, we're not, next year there'll be more things that we'll bring into it, but, uh, at this point, uh, you know, we're, we're trying, and I've been very, uh, impressed with what staff has done with this, we're trying to tell our story. Uh, yes, we'll have all the financial information and then we'll, we'll certainly have that all available. It'll be a much easier, easier to read format, but we're also telling people about what it is that we've done in the past year and what it is that we're doing with our budgets as we look to twenty eighteen. Uh, and I kind of threw it out there as a challenge because I wasn't sure we were going to be ready to start that and do that and incorporate that this particular year. Uh, but I threw that out as a challenge, uh, and like I said, uh, the department heads and staff have been amazing with it, so we are going to move forward with that and bring that as part of our, 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 uh, budget document. Your budget document is going to be a lot thinner, but it's going to be a heck of a lot more understandable at the same time. So, uh, really looking forward to that. And I think that you all will be happy with the numbers we eventually bring forward. And I'll leave it at that.
Well, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, without due respect, guys like me that have looked at a budget a certain way for so many years, it's, when you say it's much easier to read, it's actually, for me, it's, it's actually harder to read because I have to reteach myself to, to look at something that I have never seen before compared to what I'm used to seeing.
Change is good.
We never stop learning.
So, don't be surprised if I look at, I mean, I, I remember when we could actually look at the budget and see the breakdown by line item. You take the line item of the budget code and then you could actually flip the page and break it down, and it would break down that line item into actual, you know, wages and benefits and blah, blah, blah.
And that, and, and the, and the fifties line item budgeting was very much in vogue.
It was in what?
In the fifties, line item budgeting was very much in vogue.
Okay.
That was what was considered the way to do it.
And his music is great.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I had a thought on a gentleman at two twenty-five summer bill I'd like to throw out. He's been paying sewer charges for as long as I, anybody can remember.
That was considered in his project.
Okay.
And that, that money, that money was refunded, yes.
I understand that, I'm not going that way. He, we were all, and he was under the understanding, he had paid his SAC credits or SAC charges. You know, why should he be paying them now? He's grandfathered in. According to Met Council, he should not have to pay that in my book. He got in when the city was brought into the whole program. He should have got in under the same program that everybody else got in.
He should write a letter to the city.
But didn't we pay his SAC credits by lowering the amount?
We did.
Yeah, we, and, and this was brought forward to council-
Two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago, and this was addressed, so.
Okay.
But I think the point, the point is, I, the point is, is when the city was brought in, it was brought in not parcel by parcel, it was brought in as a whole chunk of the city. How did one get missed when it was part of a whole mass expansive piece of land?
I bet it's not going to be the only one that got missed.
No, I'm sure it's not.
Right. I thought, I thought we treated that resident, uh, as fair as possible given the circumstances and, uh, in the end we did, uh, give him dollar amount credit for that.
We changed our policy.
Yeah, we should be fighting Met Council to take that dollar amount back.
Perhaps. All right, um-
They would turn around and say you don't get sewer credits when somebody comes offline there, so.
Right, yeah. What's that?
They would turn around and say you don't get sewer credits when somebody comes offline.
I think a motion is adjourned, uh, November twenty-first, twenty seventeen, at seven P.M.
Second.
I have a motion.
Motion and a second?
Third.
Oh, thirds. Uh, any further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.